Good evening, everyone. Today is November fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two. This is a special meeting of the Cupertino City Council. It's five thirty P. M. Madam City Clerk, could you please conduct the roll call?
Councilmember Moore?
Here.
Councilmember Way?
Here.
Councilmember Willie?
Here.
Vice Mayor Chow is not at the dais yet. Mayor Paul?
Here. Thank you, Madam City Clerk, and I understand Vice Mayor Chow is coming over from City Hall to join us momentarily. And so the item on our special meeting agenda tonight is a study session, and it is the one and only item. It is a status update on the sixth cycle of our housing element. And so I believe that there is a staff report from our acting community development director. Is that correct, Madam City Manager Pamela Wu?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Paul. We do have a short presentation prepared for City Council to walk you through where we are with the housing element. And I believe Luke is available on screen. He was planning on giving the presentation in person, but like many others, he is coming down with some symptoms and does not want to-
Oh, understood. Excellent.
So he's taking this presentation remote, but I do see Luke available to start a presentation.
And I will go ahead and just note for the record, Madam City Manager, as well as Madam City Clerk, that the Vice Mayor is apparently on Zoom. And so Vice Mayor, if you just want to vocalize your call into the roll-
Oh.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Vice Mayor. And so Luke, Acting Director Connolly, welcome, and we look forward to your presentation.
Okay, thank you very much, Mayor Paul, and members of the City Council. I'm happy to be making this presentation tonight. I'm assuming that you can see the presentation I have up on the screen. I'm going to try to go through this briefly-
We can see it.
-give like a ten-minute overview of where we're essentially where we've been on the housing element update, what the current status is, and what the recommended path ahead for the project is. So upfront, the recommendation that we were making at this time, I believe we're all cognizant that there's something of a time crunch with the housing element that we're all facing, pretty much all cities in the Bay Area on this, is what we're recommending at this time is that the current draft of the housing element that we have, that we get that prepared and go through the required public comment period that is required by state law, and we go through that as soon as possible and submit the draft that we have to the Housing and Community Development Department, which we're confident we could do by the January thirty-one, two thousand twenty-three certification deadline. That does not mean we would have a certified housing element by HCD, but we'd be able to get a draft to them by that date. Included this slide, just for people who may be new to the process, I know we've had a lot of meetings, this may be familiar, but for a lot of people, the housing element is essentially an exercise in accommodating the regional housing needs allocation or RENA. I just want to remind people, the city's RENA is four thousand five hundred and eighty-eight total new units that we would need to accommodate in the eight-year period of two thousand twenty-three to two thousand thirty-one. Over twenty-six hundred of those units, or about fifty-seven percent, would fall into the affordable categories of very low, low, and moderate income. So again, this is probably just a refresher for people that have been following. We spent a lot of time talking about sites. That will not be the focus of tonight, but I just wanted to have people aware of that number. Also, some background on the housing element for people who may be new to the process. The housing element is part of the city's general plan. It essentially touches on all things housing, policies, your programs, your housing needs analysis, and of course, your sites inventory that's needed to accommodate your RENA. Unlike every other element of your general plan, like land use or transportation, the housing element is updated every eight years per state law. So increasingly, it's becoming more of like an ongoing contract between the state and local governments. There's an annual report that tracks your progress on housing development. So in many ways, your housing element is the most active of the elements between the state government and local agencies. Again, we're in the sixth cycle that covers the planning period of two thousand twenty-three to two thousand thirty-one. The certification deadline for housing elements for Bay Area jurisdictions is January thirty-one, two thousand twenty-three. That's two and a half months off. The city is not going to have a certified housing element by that date, nor is probably any other city in the county. Right now, I believe only one Bay Area city is certified. But our goal, again, is to get the draft to HCD and get this process more actively going with them so we can receive comments and respond to them sooner in two thousand twenty-three. So far, progress made to date. The housing element was essentially begun a little over a year ago, September of last year, two thousand twenty-one. The city entered into a contract with EMC Planning Group to prepare the housing element and documents such as the EIR that were part of the project package. There were council study sessions held in September and November of last year, providing general overviews on the process. On December ninth of last year, there was a Housing Commission Study Session held in the morning and an evening community meeting, which essentially kicked off the community engagement process for this project. In early of March this year, the City Council also formed the Community Engagement Plan Strategic Advisory Committee, which consists of two council members and the Planning and Housing Commission Chairs. That body has met eight times since late March, the most recent meeting being on October twenty-sixth, and has essentially guided the community engagement and affirmatively furthering fair housing processes for the project. There have been, I believe, twenty-two public meetings in the calendar year of two thousand twenty-two, starting in late January. That includes Planning Commission, Housing Commission, Advisory Committee, City Council meetings, as well as three community meetings held between May and September that focus largely on affirmatively furthering fair housing requirements, which are a key component of the sixth cycle update. Really, all of the meetings in two thousand twenty-two have focused on either establishing a sites inventory or community engagement. On June twenty-eighth and July five, the Planning and Housing Commissions held two joint meetings in which they made their final recommendations on the sites inventory to the City Council. And on August twenty-nine and thirty, on back-to-back evenings, the City Council acted and approved a sites inventory, which is a major milestone for getting through your housing element update. Once the sites inventory was approved, that enabled staff and our consultant EMC to shift and essentially focus on drafting the housing element document itself, and also to initiate the SEQA process. By having a sites inventory established, you could then arrive at a project description for where new housing would go. It wasn't until mid-October, October eleventh, that we received an administrative draft from EMC Planning, an administrative draft housing element essentially being more of a working document that would have allowed staff to review it and have more revisions made by our consultant before we would have submitted this to HCD. Given that we're facing, again, a real-time constraint to get this process moving, we are recommending, though, at this time, and also the fact that now we are no longer under contract with EMC, staff has reviewed the document that was provided, but no changes have been made to that text. We are recommending at this time, then, that we move this document forward and get that to HCD as soon as we can to start engaging them and getting the review taking place. In order for that to happen, there is a required thirty-day public comment period that has to occur. So we would need to make the document available to the public. We could post it and provide notices on our website that the document is available. This needs to occur, as well as if any comments are received during those thirty days, which we anticipate there will be, that there needs to be responses prepared for a period of at least ten business days. So a forty-plus day period of comment and response has to occur on the draft document before we would be able to submit this to HCD. So if this were to happen right away, and given the holidays, this probably puts us somewhere in the early-mid-January, where we could then have that comment period occur and provide the document to HCD. Once HCD would have the document, there is a ninety-day period, and they pretty much use all of that to provide a response, which takes the form of a comment letter, to cities notifying them what needs to occur to their draft housing element in order to get it in a position to be certified by them. Again, this is probably a full ninety-day process, but what would be advisable from conversations we've had with HCD staff and other planning consultants is that somewhere in the later phase of that ninety days, around the sixty-to-seventy day period, we would want to schedule a meeting with HCD to understand on a more global level what their comments are, so we could get a head start on addressing changes. One thing to bear in mind with this process is that it's generally fairly iterative, where there's more than one comment period. It's possible you could get through in one, but unlikely. So it's likely that there would be another round, and that could also take about sixty days for HCD to again review our revised draft document. This essentially, this slide essentially covers what I just said, where we're at the extreme left of this timeline, where we're looking at releasing a draft. That is what staff's recommending at this time. That would be followed by the thirty-day public comment period and the ten-day response. These are not optional. These are required by state law. At that point, we would be able to submit the draft document to HCD. If we were to, say, have this document prepared this week or in the very near future, we feel that we could have something to HCD by, say, mid-January, where their ninety-day review would begin. That would put us some to where into, say, mid-April, when we would be receiving a comment letter, and would then be revising and finalizing a more refined draft for submittal to HCD. It's difficult to gauge how long that would take because we don't have their comments yet. But again, I think the advantage of this is we're speculating a lot about what HCD might say, and by actually getting them a draft, we'll have very definite comments and know what we need to address. Once we have a revised draft, that could go through the internal processes of being presented to the Housing Commission, the Planning Commission, and ultimately the City Council for a comment on the draft housing element, including policies and anything that you would like to see changed or altered. By providing the draft at this point in time as well, it does not lock the city into anything. The draft can be completely revised. The sole purpose is really, given the time crunch we're facing, to get a document in HCD's hands as soon as we can. I feel that that would be the most advisable approach at this time. So where we're at, again, our recommendation is that we have a current draft. We know it is technically an administrative draft, meaning it's not as refined as it could be. However, it is a complete document, and we feel that it would be advantageous at this point in time to go forward and start our public comment period and get that submitted to HCD as soon as we can. We're very confident we could do so before the January thirty-one, two thousand twenty-three certification deadline. On the other hand, a second alternative would be that we get another consultant team on board, revise the draft we currently have, make it a more polished, finalized document, and then submit that document to HCD. This would add approximately three months to the process. We would not be able to submit to HCD most likely until about mid-April. So that would be about the time we would expect to be getting a comment letter back if we could get them the document in January. And that concludes the presentation I have laying out what I wanted to go over tonight, which were really those two alternatives and our recommended expedited alternative. That concludes staff's report.
Okay, great. Thank you very much, Luke. And I'm going to go ahead and have our city clerk take any comments this evening. This is true throughout the evening, because I think this is probably better practice in terms of continuity between administrations. And so let's start that this evening. And I think we're going to go ahead with Zoom first, and then, you know, blue cards, but at your discretion, Madam City Clerk, are there any comments on this item?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, we have Peggy Griffin has her hand raised. And just a reminder, if you would please have your hand raised before the first person speaking has completed their comments, as follow our current practice. And so we'll go ahead and allow Peggy to talk. Peggy?
Thank you. Kirsten, could you please display the slide I sent?
Yes. Let me, give me one moment, please. Can you see the screen?
Yes, I can. Thank you. I sent this in an email, similar. I want to know, thank you, Luke, for the presentation. It answered a couple of my questions, but who in the city, other than directly your staff, has seen the draft element document? And what are their thoughts as to, you said it wasn't polished, but is it in line with the city's thoughts? Another question, what does it contain? I'm assuming a housing element would have policies, strategies, programs. When would the EIR come in? Question three, would submitting this satisfy the deadline for requirement? You said it wouldn't satisfy the certification deadline, but it would get a document in their hands. So never mind about that one. Number four, after the thirty-day public comment period, there's a ten-day response period. Will responses result in modifications, changes prior to the submittal to HCD? Or is this, if not, what's the point of this ten-day public comment or thirty-day public comment if it doesn't affect changes? And my last question is, what are the pros and cons of the two choices, submitting it or waiting? I realize the urgency that the city is in, but I find it disconcerting that the council has been placed in a situation where a decision has to be made without even seeing the reference document. The Housing and Planning Commissions and the council were to provide inputs on the policies and strategies, yet they are being asked to forfeit this and submit a document sight unseen and have our entire city held responsible. Luke said that they could completely rewrite it, but is, will that pass with HCD? I'd appreciate the answers, and thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. Next, we have Mooney Mahdi Patla, and Scott Connolly will be after Mooney. I also have two speaker cards, Jennifer Griffin and Lisa Warren. Okay. Mooney?
Hello. Good evening, Mayor and the council. So I have two questions. One is, I think the question Peggy asked as well, which is, you know, getting this draft in HCD's hands in time, does that get us out of the penalty box, or does that satisfy the need that, hey, you know, we got you something in your hands, you know, then let's iterate through this and, you know, and agree on, you know, whatever, right? What if, you know, the submission that we made is good enough, or, you know, if it needs some revision, right? So I just want to know the answer to that question. And second, I would like to understand, you know, how many cities like us are in this process, and, you know, where they are in the spectrum of, you know, you showed a timeline schedule of, you know, like, you know, five or six milestones, right? So if you have to take all the cities, you know, that are working to submit their housing element to HCD, how, you know, let's say there are a hundred, how many of them are in different stages? You know, if you have to put them on the buckets, each bucket, like, you know, twenty of them are here in the first stage, and, you know, fifteen are in the second stage, and one is at the final stage, you know, I would like to get that kind of a view, right, if the staff or, you know, or somebody can provide the data. Those are my two questions. Thanks.
Thank you, Mooney. And next, we have Scott Connolly.
There we go.
There we go.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Hi. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I had, I, one quick comment. I think it's interesting, and I think it's actually smart, the decision to get something into HCD rather than wait to make it be perfect. As we've seen outside of the city of Alameda, HCD, to date, has issued comment letters, not accepting a majority of the housing element drafts that have been submitted to them in the first round. So I think it's smart to get out ahead of it, because it's likely, no matter how long you take, there's going to be comments to address. So I commend the city for that. A couple of quick questions. If you could talk about the status of the EIR, and specifically, I know the report mentioned it has commenced, but I don't believe there's been a public scoping meeting for the EIR, and I'm curious if that is planned, because I know that's a required item. Relative to the process of hiring a new consultant, is that something that's going to be occurring outside of the public realm? And is it safe to assume that the bulk of the hard work and effort that's been done to date, including the council-approved inventory list and the corresponding densities, that those are not something that will be artificially changed or manipulated by the new consultant? And lastly, a question of if the city has any, has any thoughts relative to, once this all gets approved by HCD later in twenty-three, does the city expect to move forward immediately and update the zoning and general plan to reflect the approved housing element by HCD? I know, Mooney, you had asked a question about what cities have done to date. So by my records, call it the fifteen counties in Santa Clara, there are ten cities, or, excuse me, fifteen cities in Santa Clara County. There's ten cities that have submitted the first draft, and they are all anticipating or waiting on their ninety-day response letter from HCD. Most of those will occur in the month of November and December. There are five cities, including Cupertino, that have yet to submit. So that's just an answer to your question. But, and then I don't know if at this time the council has any update or it's appropriate to share an update, but I know when we closed in August, we talked about up road, and I know a few of the council members were working hard on that. So I don't know if there's an update on that. If there's not, that's great. I appreciate everybody working on that, because it's certainly a great area. And thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Scott. And that completes our speakers on Zoom. We have two people in-house here. We have Jennifer Griffin and Lisa Warren.
Good evening, City Council. I'll let you know that I spent two hours this afternoon on a housing element Zoom from Southern California. I have been involved in this since the beginning. This is probably the third housing element cycle that I've gone through since two thousand. This one is one for the record books. I told you all about a year and a half ago, I used the terms a dog and a pony show, and I still believe it. It's even worse now. Now, I commend our staff, everyone's time. You have to do a job. I have worked in jobs where I had projects that we all wondered, you know, they were going to get canned down the line, et cetera. You do your job, and Scott, you did a great, I'm sorry, Mr. Connolly, I'm sorry, that's the wrong person. Our staff member did a great job. Everyone has done an exemplary job against all odds. I have the gravest concerns about this housing element. My first statement is that, and I believe it was August first or June twenty-ninth, Southern California SCAG was given an extension with a bill, so they've been given two extra years. No one is giving Northern California that benefit. That is not fair. It's discriminatory against Northern California. No one has answered our questions why we don't get treated that way. Is it because San Francisco is there and Gavin? Number two is, HCD has been abusive to every city in this state verbally, and they have been aggressive, and they have weaponized the housing element. We don't know if HCD will certify. I believe Emeryville is touting the fact that it got certified. Okay, great for Emeryville. But Cupertino has to proceed cautiously. We've all spent time on this. I had a mother in the hospital for three weeks in June. I didn't attend one of the meetings, but I attended every single one of them. So, you know, and we're coming out of the pandemic. I don't think that our state really understands where the public is mentally and time-wise right now. We have massive layoffs in, I mean, the tech companies, I don't know if these people that are writing these housing bills have been through layoffs, but they are pure hell. Two thousand was massive layoffs in tech land. Twenty-ten, two thousand and eight, and I predict we're going to hit it again. So the city needs to proceed cautiously, whether we are going to submit this thing or not. I would say at this point, let HCD wait. They, there are groups that are saying they will use the builder's remedy. I have heard in meetings it won't hold up in court, but San Francisco is being threatened by Senator Weiner over the builder's remedy. So we will proceed cautiously. I think it's, and frankly, I don't want to have the thirty-day comment period over the holidays. Let's give the public a break.
Thank you, Jennifer.
If you want to do it in, okay, if you want to do it in January, it's fine. But you know what? Let HCD wait. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. And now, next, we have Lisa Warren.
Hello, in person. So I guess I want to echo most of what Peggy questioned and pointed out, and Mooney as well, and half of what Scott Connolly mentioned, and some of which Jennifer said. I'm not sure I'm in a hurry to say let HCD wait, but I am grateful that you have options from staff and that staff has not left it as a, oh, fifty-fifty, that they have actually recommended something over the other and given reasons why. I remain very disappointed in our previous consultant and wish that we had moved on without them sooner, but here we are, and I thank staff for all their efforts. I'm frankly quite, maybe shocked is the word, that there's only five people speaking tonight on this subject, when it became such, two weeks ago, it was such a dramatic thing, and people aren't here to follow up on that. So I trust your council. I trust staff's recommendations, whether you agree with them or not. I would trust what you do. So you're not in an easy spot. I too wish there were more documentation for everyone to see before you made this decision, but thank you, all of you.
Thank you, Lisa. Mayor, just to confirm, I have not received any emails on this matter.
Okay. Thank you, Madam City Clerk. All right. So we're back to the dais on this item. And to remind everyone, we're on a study session on the housing element. And so we are at six o'clock. Our regular meeting starts at six forty-five. I would like to make sure that we wrap this in about half an hour or so. So some comments from the council, following questions from the council, I think would make some sense. Is there any appetite for follow-ups on the questions that were raised from members of the public? And so I'm going to go ahead and express that appetite. So to the extent, Luke, you or any other member of staff can speak to, you know, some of these questions, such as who has seen the draft among our staff and council, you know, what's the status of our EIR, will densities be changed by the new consultants, and when approved by HCD in two thousand twenty-three, is the city looking to move immediately on changing things like zoning? You know, so, so those types of follow-up questions, I think, are pretty productive to answer as an initial baseline before we get into some of the council questions. And so Madam City Manager, would you like to take that on or direct anyone from staff?
I'll take it on. Thank you, Mayor Paul. In general, I-
I'll take it on. Thank you, Mayor Paul. Um, in general, I summarize some of the, uh, questions from the members of public. Um, so, so far the planning staff has seen the draft. Um, it does contain the general plan policies, strategies, programs, EIR. Uh, we are in the negotiation with the new vendor to start the EIR process. Um, the scoping meeting is, uh, one of the members, uh, mentioned, um, probably will take place in January or so. It does take a while to plan out for EIR to, uh, go out. The 30-day public review period is mandated by state law. And the 10-day following that after the 30 days to consolidate the feedback is also mandated by state law. Um, doesn't necessarily mean that we have to publish the draft during Thanksgiving, during the holiday. We could probably be more sensitive to when the 30 plus 10 days, um, is, is launched. But we do want to be cautious with enough time for us to incorporate the comments to be able to submit to HCD by the end of January. Um, in terms of the other questions, in terms of who the vendor is and whether or not the public gets to review who the vendors are, um, there aren't only a handful of, uh, consultants who are preparing housing element. I think the council has full confidence in staff in selecting the right consultant to carry, carry us forward. We are in negotiation and contract, uh, negotiation with the next vendor to finish not only the housing element document, also to carry us out on the sequet analysis. Um, let me know if there's any more questions. I can provide answers, uh, as a foundation for a council's discussion.
Sure, uh, great. Though, thank you very much, Madam City Manager, and, um, I'll go ahead and, uh, turn this to council. Before I do that, I'll just, uh, make a couple of remarks. Um, we actually had a really good discussion earlier today with, uh, members of HCD and, uh, that happened as a result of, uh, me stumbling across in this very room on October 7th, um, one of those members of HCD, a, a policy analyst, uh, Sohaab Mahmood and a couple of members of ILG, the Institute of Local Government. They were holding a local planning, uh, commission seminar here in Community Hall and, uh, I just happened to peek inside and I was striking up a conversation with the three people and it turned out that one of them was, uh, a senior policy analyst over at HCD. And so I reached out to Pamela, uh, which was not too, you know, long into her tenure here and we were able to get a follow-up, uh, conversation with staff, with Luke, uh, Pew, uh, as well as myself and Pamela earlier today. So, so I, I think that was very productive and fruitful. Um, one of the things I will point out, um, and I, I know that we've gone through a season where, you know, um, you know, a lot of people like to, you know, kind of bandy about, uh, commentary, but I was, I was very certain during that conversation, this is right in the corner of Community Hall here, to have that initial conversation about whether pipeline projects in fact count, uh, because we were in the midst of, you know, that, that conversation. Do we need to have a letter of intent? And, uh, I asked Sohaab, uh, there and she explicitly said, uh, well, yes, they definitively count. Do we need a letter of intent? Uh, no, actually development agreement and the surrounding context is, is, you know, taken, uh, under, uh, very strong advisement there. So, you know, i- it's one of these things where, um, the other thing I'll say, uh, one thing I noticed from our Cities Association meeting last week, um, we had one, uh, where each of the representatives of the cities of Santa Clara County meet on a regular monthly basis. Um, and, uh, the people that were consulting, um, for the county, uh, with regard to planning and the housing element were there and they, uh, had a lot of questions to field from every single one of the representatives of all the cities. Every single one of the cities of Santa Clara County are very worried about the builder's remedy. It is not something that is, uh, unique, uh, to Cupertino. One of the questions we asked of the group of three people from HCD in fact was, um, in our county, who's going to make it on time on January 31st? Um, the answer, if I, and correct me if, uh, I'm misrelating or misremembering this, either yourself, Pamela or, or Luke, the answer was a very small handful of cities, and they didn't say the county. They said within A-BAG, right, within the area of Bay, uh, the, the Bay Area governments, um, is going to be, um, you know, potentially compliant by Ja- in January 31st. So, so, so kind of taking a lot of the flash and the smoke away from this conversation, I think it's important for us to, you know, deal with, uh, factual information based upon, you know, trying to take a good faith effort, uh, into, you know, making sure that we, um, you know, meet our deadlines, but also, you know, meet them with the, uh, underlying intent, uh, preserved. We also had a lot of good details frankly, with regard to some of these, um, positionings. You know, it, it's difficult basically to undertake an exercise where we're basically saying, look, you know, and they use this number themselves, uh, it's probably $2 million median homes in Cupertino. Um, to deliver these types of, uh, units in these types of quantities, uh, there is a very large, um, elephant in the room and that has to do with how are you going to pay for all of this? And so, um, that, that is something that we do, um, not really take head-on frankly. Um, but that's, that's true throughout the entirety of the process. I, I, I think in good faith, a lot of what this exercise is about is correcting some of the historical pushback, which is really about, um, trying to, um, you know, create, create pockets of exclusion, um, and, you know, trying to do what we can to, um, you know, not necessarily open up communities completely economically because that's, that's a feasibility issue. I- i- it's about making sure that we're, uh, correcting, uh, behavior patterns that we can, uh, correct to make sure that we're a more inclusive community. Um, so, so that's kind of the backdrop that I, that I see, you know, when we're, uh, able to, you know, follow up uh, with a conversation with a few representatives from HCD and I knew immediately, you know, when I, when I spoke with the policy, um, senior policy analyst, um, in this very room, uh, that we needed to have the follow-up. So it was good to have that contact. I, I don't think, you know, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, I think it was good to be able to have that and I'm, I'm glad to provide that context, um, to, uh, what we've been doing. And, and honestly, uh, you, you hear a lot, uh, the fact of the matter is there's just a ton of work happening in the background from, from all, uh, aspects of, of this. So, um, I guess I'll, you know, kind of conclude these initial remarks with the notion that we have worked in good faith. We have gone through the entire city, um, and there have been a number of sites that have been identified. Uh, and, and you, City Manager Wu, um, rightly pointed out some legislation. Uh, again, correct me if I'm wrong, I think you noted AB 2011. Is that correct? Okay, and you're asking, uh, the members of HCD how that affects, you know, the way that we go about trying to, um, you know, you know, pre- present our housing element and, and basically, I, you know, the, I, I think the biggest take-home that I got from it was you want to have a show of good faith. It's not just about having meetings, it's about what you think the results of those meetings are going to be. Um, and it's, uh, i- if you can basically pin like notions of this is what we're going to do and when we would like to do them by, um, i- i- it's really that kind of conversation. Um, so, so that's, um, you know, you, you can't necessarily, you know, put black letter legislation by it, but I think that's the spirit of the general conversation, if that's, you know, reflective of what you were hearing as well.
Sure, hundred, you're a hundred percent right on the mark, uh, Mayor Paul. So I brought up the AB 2011, which will go into effect by next July. Um, the fact that the current draft does not reflect the AB 2011 legislation just because we, when we're preparing it, it wasn't signed into law yet. Um, do you want to acknowledge that this will become effective, uh, hands my question for HCD? Um, quite frankly, to the members of community, HCD's response was, we recognize that a lot of cities are going through the same chalndrum, so why don't you submit your draft knowing that this is going to be one of the comments coming from us, then you can incorporate that change on your second round.
Okay, and so if I may, um, and I'll call on hands, um, since we're, we're at the council dais part, portion of this, uh, to the extent I see them, um, first question, when we talk about the 30-day comment period and the 10-day response period, is that, is that, is that, is it, it's just definitive that we have to wait those 40 days before submitting that initial draft? Is that correct?
I'm looking on city attorney. I believe that's a state requirement.
That's correct. It's mandatory.
Okay, so we, okay, the minimum would be 40 at this point. And, uh, there was some follow-up from, uh, Acting Director Connolly with regard to the timing or it might have been you, City Manager Wu, as to whether we can submit in the holiday season, not submit, but rather open it up to the public. We sit at November 15th here, however, and so, you know, Thanksgiving is, i- it's true, it's a week and two days away, but I mean, what kind of chances do we have if we were to, you know, basically tonight, give you direction uh, to go ahead and before that so-called holiday season, before next Wednesday essentially, uh, be able to release it to the public?
Great question. So we're hoping to publish the draft by the Monday after Thanksgiving.
Okay.
For 30 days and, um, staff will take the extra 10 days following that and will still make the end of January deadline, um, for, for the draft.
Okay, so you're looking at November 28th, Monday, November 20th. Okay. Great, uh, we have Vice Mayor Chow with a hand raised and so we'll go ahead and call on, on Laung. You're on, you're on.
Okay, hi. Um, if the plan is to open, publish on the Monday, I assume the draft will be ready to be published on Wednesday. And I would prefer that we open, uh, make the draft available before the holiday so that people who have time can take the time to, um, to, to start reviewing, but then we can count it for 30 days from the Monday. So we give people a little more time, um, and not counting the holiday days for the 30 days. I think that's, um, more, people do need that time to review it. It's good to give them a few more days. And, and also I would like, it's a little concerning that we are going to give the public a draft, which was prepared by a consultant whom I think for people who have worked with them know their work quality. And so I'm concerned they don't know the vision of the city or what the council or the community has in mind. So I think there are two options. Can I, can we get some, um, confirmation that there are no surprises in the draft? Every policy is in line with existing city policies and, uh, standard. Or we could form maybe a subcommittee of council to at least double-check, um, to, to be sure that, um, the draft follow existing council direction that's standard. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Vice Mayor Chow. And, uh, you know, I can confirm for my part, I haven't seen the draft. I've asked about it, but I haven't actually seen the draft. So, um, I'm assuming that others on council haven't seen the draft either. I see head shake, head shakes. Okay. Um, a- any, any, um, feedback from Vice Mayor Chow's suggestion and question, Madam City Manager Wu?
Sure, um, I myself have not seen, um, the draft itself. Uh, I trust that Acting Director Connolly has reviewed it. Uh, but as, uh, Luke pointed out, it is a draft coming from the prior vendor. Um, I wouldn't say that this is a hundred percent the draft that we, um, are preparing for. Um, if we are looking at forming a subcommittee to review the draft, that's certainly doable. However, that may push out the January deadline.
Yeah, and, and I, I think the expectation is that there is going to be a substantial amount of modifications to that draft. Um, but we're not precluded from, from seeing the draft, right, from you know, council or it's a work product of a consultant hired by the city.
So, so, um, council can certainly direct staff to publish that draft tomorrow.
Mm-hmm.
Um, maybe we don't start a 30-day review right away or maybe we do a 35 days or 40 days. So the members of public and city council can see the published, uh, the draft in published form. Uh, we just, I mean, I hate to burden the public during the holiday season to review, um, the draft, but maybe we can lengthen the public review time, um, to allow, to us also accommodate a holiday schedule.
Okay, so let's ask this question. So as we sit on November 15th and we're looking at potentially two weeks from yesterday, what was staff planning under the staff recommendation of doing with these 13 days? Um, with regard to, if we were to authorize the publication on the 28th of November on that Monday, what would have happened in this intervening time? Uh, say nothing changed with regard to forming a subcommittee or releasing it to the public or giving it to council members, you know, beforehand. What, what would staff have done during that intervening time?
Sure, um, so we are in communication with the future vendor right now. We would like to take their feedback and especially what we learned this morning from HCD staff, um, this morning. Some of a very constructive criticism or feedback, if you will, that we were hoping to incorporate that in the next two weeks before the, um, the administrative draft is published.
Right, and just, you, you know, I, I don't want people to think that was a Freudian slip. I mean, it was, I thought it was constructive feedback. I didn't hear criticism. The only thing I really heard was basically saying, get that draft in as early as you can. I mean, that's essentially what that take-home message was.
I, I, I would, I would agree with you as well.
And I know you're maybe feeling a little bit of the weather and we thank you for, you know, uh, hanging in there, but you did fall off at the very end of the meeting. Uh, Luke and Pew, I believe, were there and I, I did ask that question. You know, what is, if you had to tell us one take-home message, what it would be? Get what you have in when you can get it in as soon as quickly.
Right.
As soon and as quickly as possible.
And that, and that, and I think, I, I heard the rest of the conversation. I would agree with that, Mayor Paul. Um, to kind of answer Vice Mayor Chow's question, um, I wouldn't necessarily again call it a hundred percent substantially compliant, but it is a working draft, um, that the prior, uh, consultant has worked hard. Um, and as you mentioned, if we do anticipate feedback from HCD and the members of public, we will have another chance to review and incorporate those comments.
Right, right. Well, one thing I will say, and I, I think it's, this may be the reason, you know, the, the best reason to have had this interface, um, within that 60 days of, uh, review period, that initial 60 days, um, HCD has been willing in some cases to interface with planning departments. And so having, you know, so, so just to be clear, I mean, we talked to, uh, the senior policy analyst as well as the two people that apparently will be reviewing Santa Clara County drafts and have been. Um, a- a- and so having that interface between our staff and, you know, HCD probably gives us a bit of a leg up on being able to have that set of conversations on that ongoing basis, wouldn't?
You're, you're absolutely right. So, um, the two staffers that we met today not necessarily are reviewing the county city, uh, housing element. They will be reviewing city Cupertino's housing element. And they also mentioned that if possible, they could do a check-in within 30 days to give us feedback and we can continue to work on these comments. We could do another follow-up during the 60-day and wrap up with the completion of the 90-day review. So that will give the city team a multiple chance to talk to HCD and start. I mean, once the draft is submitted, doesn't mean that we're not going to work on it. We can continue to refine the draft that we submitted and get those feedbacks from HCD and start incorporating them to them.
Right, right. Policies and, you know, potential future legislation on the city basis, that's, that's going to be fairly
Right.
and changing, that's going to be fairly important, right? I mean, we're going to, right? Well, when is the timetable looking like for, um, our, our city's work on that?
Sure, so if we're able to, uh, make this submitted, say by the end of January, take the full 90 days from HCD's review, that will take us, uh, to the end of April, early May-ish. Um, give staff about a month or so to incorporate. We do anticipate a go-to housing commission maybe in June, planning commission, um, late June, early July, and it will come to council maybe August, September.
Hmm, hmm.
And then that will be aligning with the EIR process.
Right, right. Okay. Um, I see Vice Mayor Chow, you still have your hand raised and I will look at the dais. I see Councilmember Moore. Uh, Vice Mayor Chow, was that from before or can we visit Councilmember Moore and then Councilmember Way before we give, uh, you another round?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, so let's go to Councilmember Moore now.
Okay, um, so what, what's the earliest we could have it, um, published? And then with regards to policy, is there, I'm going to assume there's already some policies in this, okay. And that, um, is there, if, if we find that some don't seem like they're going to work for us, that we can alter them? Because I don't want to feel as though something is cast in stone if there's actually some alternative means that we can do.
Of course. So the earliest that we can publish, I don't want to commit tomorrow, but maybe by the end of this week. Um, the policies that we will carry some of the existing policies from, from the current housing element and carry them forward to the next housing element. If they're not applicable anymore, we'll take them out. Um, we might be needing new policies to implement the new units that has been selected by council. Nothing is, is cast in stone and that's why this is a draft.
I mean, one, one of the comments I remember hearing was that, and, and, and this is one of our own planning staff saying this, kind of, kind of take the planning staff ease out of it, right? Because there's some sort of hedge language sometimes where a word like could
Yes.
you know, should turn into shall, you're right. I mean, in terms of what they would like to see in the draft housing element, so.
And, and, and that's absolutely right. So the planners have a tendency to be more, um, generic. Um, you know, you should, you could, would consider, um, a possib- a possibility. HCD's feedback is, um, they would like to see more definitive and stronger, more solid approach. Uh, conduct such, um, outreach meeting to, uh, possibly engage X number of m- members of community.
Right.
Um, abzone by this number. So tho- so those are the, uh, the takeaway that I got from this morning as well.
Yeah, it may not be a bad thing. I mean, speaking of the word may, I mean, we've gotten into a little bit of, you know, kind of a braille bush in, in our own city with that, not so kind of a braille bush in, in our own city with that not so long ago. Um, so we'll go back to Councilmember Moore before we head to Councilmember Way. Did you have a quick follow-up?
Um, yes, so just looking at the, the calendar, um, so if you were to publish on Friday, what's, and, and you've got that ten-day period, um, for comments, right? So how long can that, can the document stay, stay open?
So Friday the eighteenth, right? And then thirty days from that would be December twentieth.
You can go longer than thirty, so I'm.
It's minimum thirty days.
Minimum thirty days.
Right, I'm trying to see how, how, you know, if, if we can alter either of those numbers, if we can alter the ten-day number or the thirty, is there some merit to doing that? And it sounds like with the holidays, some people would like to have a longer stretch. But I don't know if it's the thirty days should be longer or the, the ten days if it can be lengthened, if that should be.
So how about, and through the mayor, if we aim, staff aims to have the draft documents submitted to HCD by January twentieth? And let us figure out the rest.
That's a fair enough, yeah, statement of direction. I think that's, uh, fairly strong. Uh, Councilmember Way, you're next, and then we'll go back to, well, I'll check in with Councilmember Willie and then Vice Mayor Chow.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Paul. So I have three questions. The first one, just a confirmation, this is the document included. I mean, uh, there's nothing in concrete. You submit the, uh, draft. When the HCD comments, they could comment one month, you know, in between, and we can still do the adjustments and do the, so it's, it is. So I like that, is we're continuing look, uh, refining it.
That's correct.
And the second is, when would EIR kicking?
Uh, great question. Um, so it is absolutely right, uh, this is a draft, even though after we submitted to HCD, we will still have the opportunities to refine it. Um, in terms of EIR, we're hoping to have the scoping meeting, um, early part of next year. So January, if not February. Um, so EIR is a longer process, need to have the contract, uh, scoping meeting, and then we'll have a, a series of meeting. Right now, we're still, um, in the contractual obligation with the vendor.
One last question is from the resident. Um, for the ten-day or more than ten-day feedback, does the staff, uh, do the staff incorporate those feedback into the final draft?
So for the thirty days, a thirty-day calendar days for any members to submit their comments. Uh, ten business days for staff to incorporate those comments that have been received during the public review period into the draft. Understood that this is going to be a very aggressive, uh, timeline if a lot of comments are given. So we'll try our best to incorporate those comments.
So, so that follow-up question, it seems to be safer if we have a little room for the staff.
Um, but if the direction is that we're going to submit by January twentieth, we'll figure out a way to make it work.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, great, thanks very much. Uh, Councilmember Willie, did you have anything?
Sure, looking at the clock, you know, don't have all that much time left. But, uh, that being the case, I'll kind of focus on the, the, uh, item of interest to me. And so I'll start by saying, you know, uh, Luke, thank you very much for a nice presentation. Uh, thank you for moving this along so quickly. And I think our housing sites that we identified, you know, in those previous meetings, um, look pretty reasonable to all of us. At that meeting, you know, I brought up, you know, that, um, I see that, uh, I think there's opportunity on Bub Road. And so in that respect, I'd like to kind of focus my comments. Um, you know, just reminding that, you know, Bub Road is, you know, just a block away from De Anza College. It's, uh, really close to Mona Vista, which as I have heard, is now seeing declining enrollment also. And if we were to have this vision for a walkable, bikeable, uh, area with, you know, residential housing added, it's also right at the two eighty, eighty-five, uh, Foothill Expressway, um, uh, access points. That being said, we set up, uh, the, uh, subcommittee, the mayor and I, and we've been reaching out, uh, that subcommittee was tasked with the east side of, uh, Bub Road. And those were then included in the SEQA, which to me, that's great because now we've kind of prepped our, um, housing element with the ability to, to handle that. All that being said, I'm very optimistic and I feel, I feel I have good news. Of the, uh, property owners that have been reached out to, I've heard back from one that clearly says they want to be a part of the housing element. Point eight, uh, nine acres. And to me, that's a great signal to start this, you know, potential vision. But even more important than that, I think, is that should be helping all the residents that we're telling us reduce the reliance on the pipeline projects. And how do you do that when we have scrubbed the city so well? Well, Bub Road is twenty-seven acres, not including Results Way. The Results Way is another nine acres. And so, um, by presenting HCD with our package, a vision for a significant area of our city that is intended to, um, meet the, the intent of the, uh, sixth housing cycle, I think that's going to help HCD say, wow, these guys are really going beyond just sticking pins on a map and saying stick five here, stick thirty there. No, these, these people are looking at how they can move their city into the next transition, something that's going to work for the community that, right now on Bub Road, not including Results Way, there's over five hundred thousand, uh, square feet of office. Sure, it won't all go away. But when we're adding two million square feet of office to Valco and putting that demand for housing within our confines, if we're able to reduce some of the office space and have it take on the housing and services and retail components, every bit will help, every bit will help. That being said, at the end of the council meeting tonight, because I don't think I can do it here, don't think I'm allowed to do it here, but I'll request for an agenda item for the December sixth so that we as a council can decide if we're going to add this additional site to our housing element, not removing anything that's already been identified and put in our site selection, but adding this, adding this as another location and a, uh, an amount of housing per our original thirty-two units per acre.
Councilmember Willie, I'm going to have to ask you to wrap, so, um.
I'm good.
Okay, City Manager had her microphone turned on. Did you want to?
Just point of clarification, Mayor Paul. So if we do, um, add a agenda item on December sixth, that will push out the thirty day and the ten days. So we'll not be in time to submit by the end of January. However, the Bub Road area is included as tier two in the current draft.
Okay, um, well, under advisement, uh, and so I think, I think let's go ahead. We did say that we would get back to Vice Mayor Chow. Uh, and so Vice Mayor Chow, did you have a, uh, follow-up at this time? And just keeping in mind our, uh, our time, uh, in, in substance, maybe you could give just a very brief summary, uh, of what it is that you wanted to follow up on at this time.
So I think January twentieth deadline sounds good. Uh, January seventeenth is, uh, council meeting. So I am hoping that a draft, revised draft will be on the council agenda on January seventeenth before it's submitted. And, uh, I did not hear any confirmation from anyone who has seen the draft that the policies do align with existing city policies. Can I get at least that confirmation? I'm very concerned because EMC proposed a stakeholder group that was not used by any city. Until today, people are still accusing us of not following what they propose. I just.
Okay, let's, let's refer the question. Okay, let's, let's go. So Luke, I take it you've seen the draft housing element, is that correct?
Uh, yes, I, I have seen it. Um, I, I, I believe all aspects of it are going to need revisions. So I, I'm not going to say, since the policies have not been reviewed by any commission or city council, I'm not going to say the draft policies that are in the document prepared by EMC meet the city standards at this time. I'm just saying we have a complete draft document that could be presented to HCD and is not locking us into anything that's in that document at all. It can be fully revised. Again, I think that the goal is really to get something to HCD so we get their feedback on that document. But again, we're not committed to anything.
Right, I, 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 I think it is fair to say.
Because they're accused by public if we don't follow any of the recommendations. Like we have been accused by, uh, the public because EMC proposed this stakeholder group that wasn't used by anyone in any city. So I am just afraid, even though we are not committed, we could get accused if they propose something, just imagined, uh, they, they imagined a policy that we simply don't.
Okay, well, thank you Vice Mayor. Um, I'm going to go to Councilmember Moore. I'm, I'm, I am going to ask for a motion at this time. And so Councilmember, do you have a motion to put on the table?
Um, yes, I, I want to verify something. So is it possible we can have it published on Friday the eighteenth? And then have the target be the January twentieth, twenty-twenty-three submittal?
I thought, I heard that we could earlier from staff.
Of course, so that would, um, counter intuitive, uh, consider the public's, uh, request to not have a heavy document to be reviewed during the holiday. But council's direction to publish on the eighteenth, we can certainly do that.
Okay, but I'm, I'm counting like nine weeks, um, from the eighteenth to the twentieth. Is that right? And then you've got at least a thirty-day, uh, review period and then you'll have at least a ten-day. Okay, right? I mean, that's, that's, we actually have more time.
The eighteenth, um.
I mean, this, this Friday.
That sounds right. Okay, so you're talking about the twentieth, it, it should be about right. It's a couple of months and there are thirty days in November, so thirty-one in December. So you're talking about sixty-one if it's two months. And so you're talking about from eighteenth to twentieth, add another, yeah, that's sixty-three days. That should be sixty-three days, Friday to Friday, right?
Sure, we'll, we'll make it work. So we'll publish it by this Friday and aim for the middle on the twentieth.
Okay.
If, if that's council's direction.
Okay, now, one last question is, there's, we don't have to do a postcard noticing for this publication?
No, this will be available on the website. Again, we're just, um, asking the pub, members of public to comment if they wish to.
Okay, perfect, all right. So, um, I moved the recommended action with the target date of Friday for publication and, uh, January twenty, twentieth, twenty-twenty-three for submittal to HCD.
Okay, and, and just to clarify again, Friday, November eighteenth, correct?
Friday, November eighteenth, correct, twenty-twenty-two.
All right, would anyone like to second? I see two hands raised, one from Vice Mayor Chow. Vice Mayor Chow, do you want a second?
Oh, second that.
Okay, so we got a motion and a second on the table. Um, we still have a hand raised from you, Vice Mayor Chow. Did you want to, um?
Yeah, I do want to try a potential, um, amendment. And I want to, um, add that January seventeenth, I hope a draft, revised draft is put on the council agenda, um, before it goes out to HCD on the twentieth.
The council agenda, I think that is a council meeting day, should be, right? January third, January, okay. Um, how does the timing work out, Madam City Manager, for that?
Um, point of clarification through the mayor, if we do that, um, are we asking for council's direction before we submit? Or just purely make it available for council to review?
Vice Mayor Chow, are you looking for direction? Are you looking for availability for, um, just, uh, being able to view it?
Um, at least be able to view it, I.
So perhaps a, a study session or some kind of information item summarizing what has been modified based upon staff's.
I guess, just in case there is any surprise, I think we have ten more days that we could conduct a special meeting to make possible revision.
I, I think, I think Vice Mayor is referring to the difference between January twentieth and January thirtieth or thirty-first.
Okay, but if I understand correctly, the council's direction is to submit by the twentieth.
Right.
Okay.
But I, I suppose the direction could be modified at that point, so. Um, Councilmember Moore, uh, do you accept that friendly amendment from Vice Mayor Chow?
Um, I, I want to do a little bit of clarifying. So the recommended action is to, um, direct staff to publish the draft housing element in that we want it published on Friday, November eighteenth. And to solicit feedback for thirty days. Okay, so we're, I, I probably want to strike this a little bit or modify it. So, um, for at least thirty days, okay, so I'm modifying my original motion. And to incorporate comments received in the draft housing element and submit the document to the State Housing and Community Development Department, HCD, for review. And that would be, um, on January twentieth, twenty-twenty-three. So just to clarify, um, the, the ten-day period is for what again?
The ten-day, uh, period calendar, I'm sorry, business days is to incorporate those comments that staff receive within the thirty-day public review period. If we do not receive anything, then ten days is more than plenty. But if we received, um, a substantial amount, that will be very aggressive to incorporate all the changes.
Okay, and so there's the, the reality of people coming back from vacation in the start of January. So you want to make sure that the ten days, okay, so you understand we're trying to stretch out the thirty days as much as possible and make sure you still have ten days to incorporate all those thoughts. Okay, so the only alteration I've made is, is the word, um, adding the words at least thirty days. And, um, yes, I accept the informational item for January seventeenth, twenty-twenty-three.
Uh, thank you, Councilmember Moore. And Vice Mayor Chow, as Councilmember Moore describes the amended motion, do you accept that as the original seconder?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, Councilmember Willie, you have a hand raised?
Yeah, just a, a quick one, you know, from what the, uh, city manager said. So, you know, I feel this, um, you know, Bub Road, uh, possibility, uh, is important enough that if we did have a, uh, very short, uh, meeting to discuss and potentially add it to the, uh, tier one, either late this week or early next week, is that acceptable?
Well, I think you should first direct that, uh, so, so to me as the chair of the meeting, um, there are actually three of us that are not going to be in town for the rest of the week following tomorrow because the National League of Cities is taking place out of, out of town. Now, we could still hold a virtual meeting, that's true, under the current, um, protocols and conditions. But I think it might be a little bit difficult to, um, uh, to, to, to navigate that. Next week is Thanksgiving week. Uh, for my own part, you know, my kids are out of, um, you know, school the entire weekend. So we're going on, uh, on vacation, which is not to say, again, we couldn't have a, a virtual meeting. Um, so if it were a single item special meeting, I, I think maybe check in with the city manager. That's, that's my own input. I wouldn't be able to, um, moderate a discussion in a hybrid environment live is, um, is my feedback on that one.
And, and to kind of go back to Councilmember Moore, then we will not be able to submit, um, a publish by this Friday.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Moore is, is shaking her head. So it seems like there isn't that appetite from the, from the movement to go ahead and, uh, consider the movement from tier two to tier one um, for the Bub Road site you're referring to, um, Councilmember Willie. Um, okay, well, let me just try to tie up the loose end on this. Madam City Manager, is there any ability or, uh, Mr. City Attorney or, um, Acting Development Director Connolly, i- is there any possibility for this particular site under the rubric of what we've set forth here and the prospective motion, uh, to be voted upon? Uh, could that still be considered, uh, for movement from tier two to tier one sometime before submission on January twentieth? Uh, and I note that it is an appreciable amount of time between now and then. I mean, we, we are talking, um, about, I believe, um, you know, two, uh, two months and a couple of days.
So, um, so there is, there is a thirty-day public comment period that we've been discussing. The city is required to, um, uh, to review comments and take those into account. Um, anybody who was interested in those sites would have the opportunity to make a comment during that thirty-day period.
Hmm, hmm. Okay, um, and, and so clarifying question from Councilmember Moore on this.
So with regards to, um, properties which are on tier one or tier two, it was my understanding that they are all getting studied in the EIR. And when we do our final, um, kind of approval of the housing element, even if something is on tier two, it can be moved to tier one, right? Because it will have been studied within the, the universe of properties. right? Because it will have been studied within the universe of properties.
I believe we will be studying both Tier One and Tier Two in the EIR. You're absolutely right.
Okay, as long as we get to the ultimate total that we are required to do.
Okay. Thank you, Madam City Manager. Is that also your understanding, Mr. City Attorney, in terms of the interchangeability between Tier Two and Tier One?
Yeah, I think we're still working out the details of how the EIR Alternatives Analysis will be structured, but the idea is to give us as much flexibility as possible to add additional sites. So we'll sort, you know, without getting into details, that's certainly the concept that we want to advance.
Okay, fair enough. We set at 6:41, and so I don't see any further hands raised, additional hands further, I should say. Vice Mayor Chow is now waving at me physically in addition to her, or on Zoom, I should say, in addition to the Zoom hand raised. So Vice Mayor Chow, did you have any concluding thoughts before we take a vote on this item?
To clarify, so the draft housing element will include the Tier One and Tier Two sites, right? And if people may comment during the commenting period, it's likely the revised draft, which we will review on January 17th, might consider certain sites to be moved to Tier One?
Okay, some additional clarification on the point from Vice Mayor Chow, which I think is fair, but we are running against our 6:45 notice start time for the regular meeting. Very briefly, and I think it's a fair question.
Sure. So look, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we will only be including Tier One in the draft document. The EIR will include both tiers.
Oh, Tier One and Tier Two?
Yes. But the draft document, because council only selected Tier One to be included on the site selection.
I see, I see. Okay, so that's the kicker. Okay.
Here's the however.
It just seemed to be a kicker somewhere in the room.
Then my question is whether on 17th, there is an opportunity to add or subtract sites to the Tier One that's on the submitted draft.
Well, then we lose the 30-day review period, right?
That's correct.
I mean, so essentially, if we were wanting to do it again, and if we were in some kind of modification or feedback from HCD, we would have to kick in the review period again then. Okay. So we're up against the same wall that I think Councilmember Woolley realizes there the entire-
I would-
Yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead, Vice Mayor Chow.
I thought the way the response is there will be revision to the draft. We wouldn't, by revising some of it doesn't mean we have to go out and do the review, 30-day review again.
I'm not, I'm not sure that that comports with the understanding of what's being expressed here. I think if you have a site, it needs to undergo a 30-day review period if you're gonna be submitting it as a housing element site, so.
Oh, any site change needs 30-day review. Okay, I didn't know that.
Is that correct, Mr. City Attorney?
Yeah, no, I don't think there's a special rule that requires site change to have 30-day review. I think that the issue on the 17th would be that, you know, if there is an expectation that the city is going to be submitting on January 20th, the review on the 17th would be informational, and I think it essentially would require an up or down vote from council, right? We would not, we would not be able to practically get into a situation where we were picking and choosing the changes that we made.
Yeah. And along that line, if any substantial changes are occurring on January 17th and another 30-day public review will kick in.
Well, why don't we do this? Can you do anything between now and Friday in terms of the language of the draft document to inject the notion that Tier Two could potentially be considered during this, you know, period of time before we submit? I think that's something that could be, you know, perhaps wordsmith over the course of the next three days. And I realize that perhaps among the entirety of this meeting here, only one employee has actually looked at the draft document, but maybe this is the time to kind of crack the books open, so to speak, and see what can be done.
I, given that we only have three days before the Friday, I would respectfully ask not to do that. That is a big undertaking, because it's not just the Bub Road, it's everything else that's on Tier Two.
Yeah, that's fair enough. Okay. All right. Well, we got a motion on the table. I think it's been discussed. I'm gonna go ahead and call the, I do see Councilmember Wei has a hand raised, and I apologize to our members of the public. I know we're at 6:45 here, but bear with me one more minute. Councilmember Wei, do you have a comment on this or did you-
Real fast, I don't think the point of discussion is necessary because once we get the HCD's feedback, we can switch Tier One to Tier Two. There are plenty of opportunities to do that. So I do think time is of essence and we should go ahead with the vote.
That is in some essence what I'm hearing as well, that it could potentially be, you know, added. And I see head nodding, but yeah, I think, I think, I think the elements of consideration are on the table right now. So let's go ahead without any further hands raised. Points well taken. Madam City Clerk, could you please take a roll call vote on the motion that is on the table now?
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Wei?
Aye.
Councilmember Woolley?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Yes.
The motion carries unanimously.
Okay. Thank you very much, Madam City Clerk. I'm gonna go ahead and adjourn the special meeting. That special meeting is adjourned. It is now 6:46. I'm gonna go ahead and start the regular meeting at 6:50. Okay, so just to give people a brief transitional period. So we will see you in three minutes. Thanks very much. Is everyone ready? Well, welcome. We have a great packed house here today and community hall in Cupertino. It is November 15th. This is our regularly scheduled city council meeting, the second one in November 2022. And so if everyone could join us in pledging allegiance to our nation's flag, thank you. Please rise. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Great, thank you very much. And Madam City Clerk, could you please conduct our roll call?
Councilmember Moore?
Here.
Councilmember Wei?
Here.
Councilmember Woolley?
Here.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Here.
Mayor Paul?
Here. Thank you very much, Madam City Clerk. Okay, so our first item tonight in our regular meeting is, under ceremonial matters and presentations, we have three proclamation sets to provide. Our first one is a proclamation for United Against Hate Week, and this comes out of the jurisdiction that our city attorney had previously come from, from Berkeley. And I understand that we have a member of the mayor's staff, welcome here to accept the proclamation, Anthony Rodriguez, from, I believe, your chief of staff to Mayor Aragorn, is that correct?
Not yet. I am a senior advisor to the mayor, but thank you very much.
Senior advisor, okay, climbing the ladder. Okay, very good. Well, welcome, Anthony. And so we'll go ahead. Do you have any words to share about United Against Hate Week? We do have a packed audience here, so you have our rapt attention, and it's a very important message to share.
Well, thank you so much, Mayor Paul, and thank you all for attending and for passing this proclamation. On behalf of co-founders Jaclyn McCormick and Patrice O'Neil, the organization Not in Our Town, and the organizers of United Against Hate Week Northern California, I'd like to extend our deepest appreciation and gratitude to the city of Cupertino for their commitment to standing up against hate. Beyond the symbolism of this proclamation, this act taken by the city demonstrates our collective region's growing unified support to come together as one, to pacify and stop acts of hatred in its various forms as it precipitates in our communities. On average, bias-motivated incidences have increased in major U.S. cities by 39%, and in the largest 10 U.S. cities by 54.5%. The bulk of this increase has been directed at Asian, Black, and Jewish residents. However, we can do something at the local level, among local communities, to make a change that can be felt in people's lives. United Against Hate is a call to action to bring diverse communities together to stop the spread of hate. Again, I'd like to thank you for your ongoing support of United Against Hate Week. Now in our fifth year, the week of events spans from November 13th to the 19th and includes organizations and communities to the sum of over 200. Working together, we can be stronger than hate. And with that being said, I'd like to extend a warm invitation to you all to join the city of Berkeley's signature United Against Hate Week event tomorrow on Wednesday, November 17th. At 6:30, we will be welcoming guests at the UC Theater for a screening and discussion of Repairing the World: Stories from the Tree of Life. This 90-minute documentary film highlights the city of Pittsburgh's inspiring action in the aftermath of the assault on three congregations at the Tree of Life synagogue. It is a hopeful view of what communities can do when they come together and rise as one against hate and racism. Thank you all again. Have a lovely evening.
Thank you very much, Anthony. And hold on for a moment. We'd like to get a screen share, a shot of the proclamation being presented. We do have one square. And I think, Vice Mayor Chow, if you can hear us, please turn on your cameras as well. And then Councilmember Moore, who for social distancing purposes doesn't have the Zoom camera, will be joining my panel square here. We'll go ahead and provide this. And I don't see, oh, Vice Mayor Chow is here. Great. So perhaps, Vice Mayor Chow, you can join either our city manager or Councilmember Wei or Councilwoman Woolley. You can even kind of photobomb back here in front of, all right, great. All right, everyone, big smiles.
Okay.
Great, thank you so much. And Anthony, good luck on all your endeavors this year for UAH as well as in all future years.
Appreciate you all.
Yeah, thanks so much. All right. Yeah, very good. Okay, our second proclamation tonight is for Small Business Saturday, and I'm very pleased to be able to welcome several members of our business community. And so I'll ask our council as well city manager, join me on the dais with Vicky Tsai of Dry Clean Pro, Efren Floris of Holders Country Inn, we have Thalia Swangchen of Pineapple Thai, we have Kishore Mua of Trinitra Indian Supermarket, we have Gloria Yo and Lucas Liu of Sun Design Center. And so we have this wonderful melange of local small businesses. And so if you all could join us, we would love to be able to present these proclamations to you for Small Business Saturday. All right, come on up, guys. after Thanksgiving. We all know that Friday after Thanksgiving is a very large shopping day throughout the country, but Small Business Saturday was created not so very long ago to make sure that the local small businesses are supported. And so, once again, we have a number of excellent small businesses throughout the community of Cupertino represented here. We have Trinitra Indian Supermarket, we have Holders Country Inn, which I had the pleasure of seeing and having breakfast there yesterday. And everyone, it was great to talk to you there. It is now in the location of, I'm blanking on the name of the Steins Beer Garden, right? So excellent location, really glad to see you relocate from San Jose to Cupertino. It's wonderful for us to see that. Vicky, Dry Clean Pro, stalwart of our community for many, many years, and so-
For 34 years.
For 34 years, yeah, going on the fourth decade. Thalia, a business that opened in Cupertino, I think just into the pandemic, and managed not just to make it, but to thrive and contribute very heavily to the city of Cupertino over the years. We all know the many contributions your restaurant and you have made to Cupertino in the last several years. Sun Design Center, in case people are looking to help spruce up their homes, there are plenty of options available there. So thank you, all of you, for being here. And please, everyone here tonight, spread the word. It is so critically important with the helping of the economy to go ahead and support our local small businesses. So wonderful to have you all here tonight.
Thank you.
Yes, thanks very much. Yes. And just, just very quickly on a plug, we actually have a ribbon cutting sponsored by the city at Holders Country Inn tomorrow morning at 8:30. And so we want to make sure that the newest, you know, small business in Cupertino gets supported, and we will go ahead and help that out as well as the entirety of the local economy. All right, thanks. Let's go on to the next proclamation, which is for SVKS, which stands for Silicon Valley Korean School. I'll go ahead and stay up here with this microphone. We have, I believe, we were told 28 students here or perhaps more. I have a very considerable stack of certificates here for the students. And there was, you know, previously a request to, or at least in past practice, we had read all the names, but in the interest of time, we are going to put this on the screen. And we're going to provide an opportunity for Ms. Kim, the principal of the Korean School. We'll go ahead, and I should have asked the city council and city managers to stay up with us to provide these to your students. But if your students would like to come up on the dais and take a group shot as well, and if you or a student would like to provide a brief presentation or set of remarks that could stay within a few minutes, I will go ahead and provide you these. And yeah, please, if you have any remarks to share, and you can come on up here. Why don't you come on up here and provide those remarks? Okay, here you go. I'll turn on your mic.
Oh my gosh. Good evening, everyone. My name is Young Suk Kim. I'm the principal of Silicon Valley Korean School. Okay, first of all, on behalf of our school, okay, I would like to thank Mayor Darcy Po and then Vice Mayor Liang Chow and all of, you know, city council members for inviting us to the city council meeting. Thank you so much. Today's award ceremony is very meaningful for us because, you know, the city recognizes our volunteers' dedication to the community. Do you know how many hours do they volunteer for this service award?
Many thousands.
300 hours. Yeah. So, yeah, so I would like to, you know, I would like to say thank you for all of our volunteers who worked very hard for 300 hours. And also to the parents who supported our volunteers for four years. Thank you so much. Okay. On behalf of our 35 honorees, so our representative of volunteers, Seon Kim and Claire Lee are going to have a speech. Okay?
And I will just make a plug. We actually have, I believe you ran out the entirety of Cupertino High School every weekend for the activities of Silicon Valley Korean School. Is that correct?
Yes, correct. Actually, you know, we have 10,028 students this year.
Wow, 10,028. Is that all? Okay, very good.
Yes. And also, we have 53 classes. We are running 53 classes. And also, the maximum 200 high school volunteers this year.
Okay, wonderful. Well, make sure that they all shop in Cupertino after, especially on Small Business Saturday. All right.
Okay, yeah, okay. So.
Seon is going to be first.
Good evening. We are Michael Kim-
And Claire Lee.
And we are here today to represent the volunteers of Silicon Valley Korean School. On behalf of all the volunteers at SVKS, we'd like to thank the city of Cupertino for recognizing our efforts and giving us the honor of accepting this award.
With a variety of classes offered from more than 30 different levels of proficiency and age, SVKS educates more than 1,000 students every week in Korean language and culture to celebrate students' Korean-American identity and promote Korean culture within the local community.
Silicon Valley Korean School has always been a special place for us. Having been a student myself until my move to Korea in second grade, I returned to the school as a volunteer when I moved back to the U.S. at the beginning of high school. I was able to make good use of my fluency in Korean and the knowledge of Korean literature I gained in Korea, helping students in the advanced seventh grade class for the past three years until I became the volunteer team leader.
As for me, I attended SVKS since I was in kindergarten and graduated in ninth grade. Throughout those 10 years, I've learned about Korean culture and how to read, write, and speak Korean, which helped me communicate with my parents as well as my relatives. For the past two years, I have helped students in the fourth grade class until I became the vice team leader.
We'd like to thank all the students and fellow volunteers who made every Saturday at SVKS a memorable experience- at SVKS a memorable experience, and our teachers for being such amazing mentors in the classroom and being role models for all of us.
We'd also like to thank the school for giving us the opportunity to volunteer, as well as the principal and vice principal, Mrs. Young Suk Kim and Mrs. Nam Mo Moon, for guiding us in our volunteering efforts and making SVKS a safe space to celebrate our Korean-American identities.
And finally, we'd like to thank our biggest supporter, our one and only volunteer teacher, Ms. Ki Suk Kim, who has dedicated her time to support and manage all 200 volunteers on campus every week. Thank you.
Okay, this is what I suggest we do. Let us give a certificate to every student here, and we'll take a big group shot. Do not take your own certificate, because that's going to take too long to figure out who matches with each one, and then perhaps you can give all of them to your instructor, they could be divvied out afterward. Does that sound like a good plan? We'll just take a big group shot with all the students here, and each person grab a certificate. So come on up to the dais, and we will take that group shot. All right, welcome. And stop for a certificate. Oh, thank you, Councilmember Wei.
Hey, nice job. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you, everyone. Congratulations. Keep up the great work. And video, I'm not sure if you've done this already, but we promised a shot of all the students on the screen, and so if you could share that as well, much appreciated.
Yeah.
Folks, in an effort to make sure that we stay healthy, we are limiting the amount of non-social distancing in our agendas, and so we're going to take a 15-minute break right now to allow a couple of our council members to take the Zoom meeting from a remote location. And so I see seven, about 7:10 on the clock here in Community Hall, so we will reconvene at 7:25, and so we'll see you then. All right, talk to you soon.